Call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the United States of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and the love of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Kathleen Leahy, Carl Duke Shiner, and Tom Beansy Colkin. Tom Colkin was a Navy veteran of the Vietnam War. He served with distinction on the Scranton Police Force. He retired with the rank of detective. And for over 50 years, Tom decorated his home on Music Street for Christmas and other holidays, bringing joy to thousands of people with his displays. His home became officially known as the Holiday House. Visiting Tom's house is a tradition that will be missed by all, and Music Street will never be the same again. I thank Tom Colkin for the memories he has given to us all. Thank you.
Mr. King?
President.
Mr. Schuster?
President.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Mr. Smurl?
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to take from the table, file of council numbers 81, 82, and 83 of 2025.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table, file of council number 81, 82, and 83 of 2025, and place them in seventh order for a final vote. These ordinance were established, a school zone for no parking zone near Francis Willard School, and established Hampton Street as a one-way, established to South Main Avenue. If anyone would like to speak on these pieces of legislation, you may do so in fourth order, citizens' participation. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, ayes, have it, and so move. Displease with the minutes of the reading of the minutes, please.
Third order, 3A, Lackawanna County Planning Commission subdivision and land development evaluation report reviewed June 25, 2025. 3B, controllers' report for the month ending June 30, 2025. 3C, minutes of the Scranton firefighters pension commission meeting held June 18, 2025. 3D, minutes of the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting held June 18, 2025. 3E, agenda for the non-uniform municipal pension meeting held July 16, 2025. 3F, minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission meeting held June 18, 2025. 3G, minutes of the composite pension board meeting held June 18, 2025. 3H, Scranton Parking System Community Development Properties Scranton, Inc. report dated July 9, 2025. 3I, renegotiated parking proposal terms with bondholders, on-street parking study, and impacts of default as presented by the City of Scranton, Grow America, and legal consultants at City Council Public Caucus held Tuesday, July 15, 2025. 3J, minutes of the City of Scranton Board of Ethics meeting held May 21, 2025. 3K, agenda for the City of Scranton Board of Ethics meeting held July 16, 2025.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
We do. I want to mention that this weekend coming up is the Annual St. Joe's Center Festival, one of my favorite summer festivals to go to here. And that's going to be happening Friday, July 25, from 4:00 to 10:00, Saturday from 4:00 to 10:00, and then Sunday from noon to 7:00. And they do their annual telethon. And this is, it happens at Marywood University. So there'll be tons of, tons of things there, lots of great food, potato pancakes are my favorite. And just want to remind people about that. And then there's also going to be, we'll be going on, on break soon, so there's a lot of things happening in August. But the Scranton Jazz Festival will be that first weekend in August, August 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. So you can catch a lot of great jazz around the city that weekend. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a quick one. So I'd like to congratulate our very own solicitor, Tom Goebright, sitting over there, for being elected the new state president of the ancient Order of Hibernians and Ladies' Ancient Order of Hibernians. This is a pretty big deal. So congratulations, President Goebright. Proud of you.
Congratulations.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations, Mr. Goebright.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Hoda-Wanis.
Joan Hoda-Wanis, Scranton. Well, I guess next week is the last meeting before the August recess. And, you know, we hear so much bad news about our local area and about Scranton, and this guy's arrested for stealing from the VFW or whatever, you know, kind of thing. It was kind of nice this week. First of all, it's not nice that we lost Tom Colkin, but just think what a great guy comes from our area. You know, his service to his community as a police officer and everything else he did. But that's not atypical for Scranton and northeastern Pennsylvania. We've had some wonderful people. And then there's St. Joe's Festival going on, you know. This community, for years and years and years, is pulled together to support with private funding one of the worthiest causes you can think of. We take care of those in need. I'm sure there's government funding that's available too, but should take pride in the fact that we don't just stick out our hand to the taxpayer. We get together and we have that festival and the telethon and Joe Snetterer and his wild bicycle ride. You know, I mean, if you're not proud of Scranton and the local area, you should be. And every once in a while, we harp on all the bad things that happen, but we should also celebrate the good things, and those are just two items. Any movement on finding a new director for DPW? Nope.
Nothing I've heard of.
Okey-dokey. And are the negotiations still on track for a new labor contract for DPW?
I don't know about on track, but I know they're ongoing.
I haven't heard anything about them going to arbitration.
A little birdie told me that there was, there was, contract negotiations were supposed to be on the 17th, but the city canceled that.
Well, you know, it's going to be seven months at the end of July that they're working without a contract, so hopefully they'll get going. Although I saw that Offburg picked up $11,940 in the month of June. I'm sure they had to be part of that. Also, in the controllers' report, I noticed that in June, the city paid out $94,500 for court awards. Now, I understand that when litigation is ongoing, no comment will be made about the litigation, but I would assume that once a court award is paid out, that litigation is completed. I assume my, you know, that that's the way it works. And apparently, $90,000 was paid out to Diller and Solomon. I assume that's a law firm. I just wonder, you know, who got $90,000 from the city and for what? Well, you know, what was the case? I don't know. Maybe, maybe I'll take some time and do a right to know, but I would assume that litigation is complete. If we're paying out a court award, it should be that way. And that stuff should be made public. And I hope maybe the paper would start looking into that, so, you know, when they have the court, you know, the court notes, something like that. I'd just love to know, you know, who won the case against the city and what was that for? And I had a question occurred, speaking of litigation. I saw in the paper a week or two ago that Mr. Basiliga is suing the Scranton Parking Authority. I don't know the specific issue. And then, of course, we've had this CDPS here, and one of the recommendations was is that we dissolve the Scranton Parking Authority and all the assets and liabilities revert to the city. Does that mean that, you know, if there's no Scranton Parking Authority, then the city becomes the receiving end of that litigation? That'd be interesting.
I'm not sure of the details, Joan. I can find out.
That would be nice to know, you know, because if you're going to go ahead and dissolve, and is it legal for us to dissolve the authority if there's a pending litigation against them? It'd be interesting to know, but who am I? Anyway, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Joan. Ryan Elman?
Good evening, council. After a couple weeks of walking and talking to a couple hundred people, the general consensus that I find is that council has failed us. It seems like the only reason you people are up there, because no one votes. I can't, I just can't get over the apathy. It's just, I was at the club a couple weeks ago. Six people that own property said they, they just didn't have any interest in this coming election for the cities. Doesn't make sense. What we have here in Scranton are the pretense of a mayor and city council overrun by the Lackawanna County Democratic Party, which results in one of the worst examples of politics in America, if you ask me. Apparently, the people, the same people that loathe all these letters to the newspaper and all the interviews on television, they've been taking apart the, the new laws of our president, especially the, they keep attacking millionaire tax people not paying taxes. But right here in town, downtown, look at the tax breaks that Basiluga, his developer friends got. WNEP, Glenmore, the wealthiest segment of our society in this very city that are complaining about the tax base, they're getting it. Another thing that people were most upset about was you giving corporate welfare to all those future bond, city bonds. It looks like you're making them free of, of the problems that came. These people went, they were broke. Thousands of people have lost their houses, cars, and so on. There's no help for them. But here, a wealthy segment that's, investors that you feel sorry for. Another thing, I heard so many people are totally disgusted with the zoning board. There's properties all over town that made into rooms and apartments. They don't have good records of them. The city's not getting anything out of them. It's senseless, just in my neighborhood. The sidewalks have become parking lots for illegal cars, just undesirable people everywhere. Right here, see, nobody cares. Nobody reads the paper. Last week's paper, a company wants to build 75 apartments on Glenmore Boulevard. They want a variance. What about the, this is what happened on Kaiser Avenue. We had to build a school for non-taxes. Nobody, I just, what about the children? What about all the parking for 75 apartments? See, nobody just seems to be concerned. This runaway out-of-control zoning board is destroying our city. They have totally destroyed my neighborhood. Undesirable people are just everywhere around there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Les Spiller?
Evening, council. Les Spiller, city resident homeowner. I also want to comment about Tom Colkin. He was a great man. When my children were younger, we'd never miss the Christmas, taking our kids up there to see the house. And my wife and I went before we had the children. We went up there ourselves. He did an amazing thing. Always blew my mind how much work he put into that. And he's going to be missed. On a good note, I was, heard noise down the block from me today, and I happened to be Russo and DeMayo cutting around the pave cut that was, I've been talking about for I don't know how many weeks now. I went down, talked to the guy. He said it should be fixed tomorrow or the next day. He said when he makes the pave cut, they're there the next day or the day after. So hopefully by the weekend, that's going to be done. And you won't have to hear me talk about it anymore. But now we have all the other pave cuts in the city to take care of. And again, I'm going to say, whoever we're paying to do the pave cut inspecting, they're not doing their jobs. They should, we should look for somebody else to do it, because whoever's doing it is not doing their job. And a gentleman I spoke to today that did that pave cut to get it ready for tomorrow or the next day, he agreed. He said utilities, don't fill them in right when they do their job. I've been saying that for I don't know how many years, but nobody listens. Next thing, hole on Dorothy Street. I've talked about for like four weeks now, still nothing done. I don't know what the city does, but they're not doing jobs. I mean, it's unbelievable. The police barricades are just sitting around there, and a hole's just sitting there. Maybe somebody falls in the hole, maybe they'll finally do something. Okay, next, Joan keeps asking about a DPW director. I have a great idea. Hire the best one that we've ever had since Paige Cognetti was mayor. Hire Tom Preambo back. I mean, after he mysteriously resigned, we've gone to DPW directors more often than I change my underwear. I mean, it's ridiculous. Tom did a great job, and like I said, he mysteriously resigned after he took a leave. I think he was forced out of office. But anyway, I think we should be knocking on his door and begging him to come back, because he did a great job. Every time he heard a problem, he watched the council meetings, he had somebody on it the next day. Lastly, watching Channel 16 News last Friday evening, this idiot woman politician from Harrisburg, I don't know if she's a Democrat or Republican, she's proposing a bill that will force people to put license plates on the front of their car in Pennsylvania along with the back. That's the most stupid idea I ever heard. First of all, my car doesn't have a place in the front to put a license plate holder. Then if they drill holes, they'll put the license plate holder on. And since I heard that story, I bet 90% of the vehicles I looked at are in the same boat. There's nowhere to put a license plate in the front, front of the cars. So hopefully this won't have any teeth and it gets just thrown out, but I think it's a ridiculous idea. Oh, and her reason was, she said the police will be able to identify the car that they're looking for better. I don't agree, but it's a stupid idea, and I hope it never comes to fruition. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Dobson?
Good evening, council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxes paid, et cetera. What Wes just mentioned with that front license plate, by the way, I helped a friend acquire an old beater a couple, while back, and he had to buy a license plate for $300, thanks to electric cars, because they're not paying the road taxes. Then we had to raise up, we had to raise up the licensing fee to $300 for a license plate. So I'm scratching my head here on that, and I didn't like the idea. And apparently, 6/8 tonight, we're finally going to be legally parking our cars on the Talk about the need for review. Nothing towards you guys, because I'm about to talk about legacy. Legacy, when you run for office, you have a legacy. And it's nothing you could have done much about, except your personal vote or influence your family or friends to vote a certain way, and you can't make them do it. And we have a legacy with the parking garages. They were overbuilt. They were overbuilt a long time ago. Everybody was saying how wonderful it was to have cranes across the skyline of Scranton, Pennsylvania. And I scratched my head and I thought, yeah, they look nice, but who's going to pay the bill? Well, I needn't ask myself any further. Here it is, you know? And I'm reasonably happy with it, but I understand it has to be done. The parking garages have to operate. But we have built parking spaces. I don't know if they still get it, but when the garage opened up next to the KC, they were handed a quarter million dollars a year of free parking space. And maybe they're charging their customers 15 bucks a night, but we're, we may not be seeing it. I don't know for sure, so I won't say. And then we have the rentals downtown. Like I suggested years ago, that if somebody wants to go in the landlord business downtown, then they should have to provide parking spaces for their customers, so they're not impeding, I don't have to walk out with a cold pizza or a cold hoagie or whatever. The street's all parked up, and I'm climbing over snow piles and you name it. And the water company was in the paper today, and I thought about this sewer authority. You know, they were supposed to be able to incorporate the cost of our sewer processing water into water bills across Pennsylvania, and they were unable to do that. And shame on the lawyers that negotiated that contract. Shame on them, because they should have thought of something like that. That's why they're lawyers. They didn't see down the line that some other third party, the Consumer Protection Bureau, could say no. And of course, we're stuck with the bill once again. $176 for two people for water for the month, last month. Really, give me a break. Talk about inflation. Okay, I kind of said what I'm going to say on the city. And by the way, 300,000 people have died globally of famine and lack of life-saving drugs already paid for and ordered. 5,000 tons of food were destroyed yesterday, burned, from USAID. And it just goes on and on and on. It's such a shame. The big, beautiful bill, 300 hospitals closing. I'm tired of being in a hospital with the Jehovah Witness in my room. Give me a break or a paramilitary. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. That is it for our sign-in sheet. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, council. Virgil Argenta, taxpayer city council candidate. A recent video showed a city police officer sleeping in his cruiser. While such incidents may prompt public concern, as someone from a law enforcement family, I know firsthand how dedicated officers are and the stress they face. It's important to remember, officers work long, high-pressure hours that often require quick decision-making, and more importantly, they're human too. One moment of rest should not overshadow the service or commitment. Rather than judging, individuals could have checked on the officer's well-being in case of a medical emergency. Our focus should be on supporting law enforcement, fostering understanding, and building a stronger community partnership with our police officers. Members of council, once again, I am requesting information on the total dollar amount of taxpayer funds spent by the City of Scranton to defend legal cases over the past six years. Could you please provide details on the total amount spent on legal defense costs during the six-year period? Whether there are any notable trends or significant expenditures in legal defense cases or costs? And lastly, how does the city track and oversee expenditures? What I'm not looking for is any personal information. I'm looking for a total dollar amount for the last six years. Council president, thank you for your service to the city. As a city council candidate, I have noticed that many questions presented at council meetings have not received any response or answers. The silence makes it hard for people to understand what's happening in the city with their government. Is there a specific reason for this approach? Are there particular factors or consideration influencing your decision not to answer certain questions from constituents? You're up for reelection. Mr. Smurl, Mr. Schuster, transparency helps build trust in city leadership. Councilman Smurl, I fully recognize and I appreciate the valuable contributions that you and your team of volunteers make to the city. Your work is truly exceptional. As a candidate for city council, it's my responsibility to raise questions and seek meaningful answers. Would it be accurate to suggest that some of your projects are undertaken in response to staffing shortages within the Department of Public Works, DPW? And there may be a need for significant additional personnel or equipment. Over the past four years, the department has seen significant leadership turnover with at least six directors, which can understandably affect operations. I genuinely welcome your involvement in city project. As your direct experience positions, you will to advocate on behalf of the DPW and increase staffing in pursuit of a fair contract. Your efforts create opportunities for positive change, benefiting both the department and the wider community, and we thank you for all you do. Mr. Smurl.
Thank you, council.
Mr. Argenta, the information you're requesting is documentation on all of that. That would be under a right to know. We don't have access to all of that.
I've filed numerous right to knows, and I've got no answers whatsoever, and I'm just asking a broad question. I'm just asking a broad question from council. I'm not looking for any informa- I'm just looking for a dollar amount over the last six years. That's all I'm looking for, a total paid out. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Not gonna talk about ECTV today, maybe next week. But, you know, let it be what it is. Let's all have some fun. The first thing I have here, you know, as a child, when I went to school in the summertime, where I worked for LA Lewis, and that was a moving company in this city, it's still here. And after that, when I was an adult, I worked for Thomas Garrity. Moved a lot of people out of their homes in this city into, um, that old, really high rises, um, low-income housing, and music, and other places. And, um, you know, I, I watch as the city just meanders all over the place. You know, we've, we've gotta start making some smart choices. Dissolving the contract with the people that run the parking garages was really, um, a very productive thing to do, because nobody wants to pay tax. And I think for the government to shield anonymity from taxation is wrong, considering that people are losing their homes because of the tax burden they're under. I really think we need to take a look at the University of Scranton. I think the city of Scranton needs to challenge their tax-exempt status. Okay? Not maybe. Don't forget, President Trump is trying to dissolve Harvard's tax-exempt status. We've got major corporations that have hundreds of millions of dollars in endowments, in money, and they're not paying anything. And the university, as everybody knows, is beginning to expand into the downtown. I mean, they have their own police department. We have to ask ourselves, what is the benefit of all these things? We have a city government and a county government that keeps buying and, and rebuilding buildings like the one, the county building, wasting an awful lot of money, because there's no private development in the city. You can talk about the person who owns the mall and all the other projects, but so many of them are driven by grant money. You know, somebody has to have a wake-up call here. The other thing I have here is, um, I'm really amazed at how great a job that President Trump is doing. Some people just can't seem to see that, because they're locked in some delusional democratic fog on what's actually happening in this country and around the world. You know, but when you take a look at Joe Biden's son out there ranting and raving about what happened to his father, and you take a look at what's really happening in our country, women raped and murdered all across the whole country, not just in one spot, everywhere. Finding a woman in a barrel full of bleach dead for two months. Women being dragged off the street and carried into a house and thrown in a closet. Not one woman, but women across the whole country. People being robbed and murdered everywhere, because we had a president who left everybody cross our border. And now, of course, is probably, everybody knows, former President Obama may be charged with treason soon. Some people may laugh about that, but all that came out of the records in Washington. And you know, the, the sad part is that the American people have been shorted by almost everybody in their government. But when a President of the United States tries to undo an election and uses the FBI and the federal government to do it, when the rank and file said there was nothing to it, and then he asks everybody to rewrite everything, it just goes to show you the kind of trouble we're in. It makes Watergate look like nothing. And then, of course, you have people, whether they're ignorant or stupid, I can't tell you that. But you know, when you look at a country, or a community, taxed beyond their means with no opportunity, no employment opportunity, nothing, you have to look at the government. You know, we're locked out of City Hall, just like people are out of the federal offices, because we never get a chance to see our representatives. The thing that happened to ECTV isn't an isolated issue either, because it's government afraid of discussions by the people who want to change their community. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
First off, the vote for the parking last week. The ordinance was rushed into Seventh Order suspending the rules, usually prevent public objections or an emergency. There was a long conversation on the motion that was left unclear, as Councilman Schuster asked, "What are we voting for here? How is there no issue if a council member is rushed into vote, a final vote on an issue, move forward suspending the rules, if he does not even understand what is contained in and being voted on? And legal counsel could not offer a concise description of what the separate bills entailed." Next, two things were not recorded from the minutes of last week's meeting. One, because Attorney Gilbride chose to comment with his microphone off, and the second was due to no microphone in the gallery to record objections before the session ended. First, I address council, and I note that Mr. Gilbride's statement of an executive session was not proper, as you need to state a case number or a reason for the need. Legal matters is not enough. A simple, basic subject on the table is required, not the details. Mr. Gilbride said, with mic turned off, that was not correct, and shook his head, and I replied, "He could shake his head all he wants. That is the law, in particular, the Sunshine Law." At the end of the session, when AT was done reading, and Mr. Smurl started to say, "If there is no further business," I had already stood and said loud enough to be heard, but with no mic, "I make an official objection." And Mr. Smurl ignored that, and quickly on a second adjourned the meeting. After the meeting was over, and before he left council chambers, I told him I properly objected during council. He ignored it, and he said, "I don't care to hear it," and left. At that point, we have two Sunshine Act violations. Now we have three. Yes, there can be a motion to reconsider, as a motion to suspend the order, though the motion to suspend it on once voted, and in this case, was fast-tracked with no emergency. The Sunshine Law requires publication of an amended agenda to be posted on the next business day, and I've secured a date-stamped copy. This has not been done. People come in here and protest an ordinance, see it voted down, then to be revisited without notice, reversed, and fast-tracked. It severely impacts the public's right to participate, and that's why the Sunshine Act is critically important, to bring light into those dark corners of government. So again, legal matters as a term alone is not sufficient to allow public understanding of an executive session, if it was really required, and I object to the lack of clarity in that. Second, I waited until the reading agenda was complete to not interrupt, and voiced my objection under law, as the president started to say, "As there is no further business." The Sunshine Act permits anyone attending a public meeting to object to a perceived violation at any time during the meeting. President Smurl ignored this and shut the meeting down. For the record, I make the following objections. I object that the Sunshine Act was violated now in three separate acts. One, the specific reason for an executive session must be announced in a public meeting either before or directly after the executive session, including the subject on review. Two, section seven ten one C of the Sunshine Act permits anyone attending a public meeting to object to a perceived violation at any time during the meeting, violated by Mr. Smurl. Three, changes to the agenda have to be posted within twenty-four hours before or allowed if the changes are de minimis, involve no expenditures of fund, and don't entail entering into a contract. All three of those were for, for, for that session. And the amended agenda must be posted within twenty-four hours after the meeting. And the agenda, amended agenda must reflect the changes that were made. The agenda is unchanged. I understand, Smurl does not understand Robert's rules, so how could he understand the Sunshine Act? But that is what legal counsel is here for. I ask City Council to remedy and address all of this. I make an official statement on record, as I'm aware the person alleging the infraction bears the burden of the proof under Smith versus the township of Richmond ruling. Smurl is the presiding officer. This falls on you. With knowledge and forethought, do you care to address any of this, or offer a remedy?
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Rick Little, candidate for mayor of Scranton still, though I haven't heard anything about it in the press. For the past year or so, I, till about three weeks ago, I, I was talking to this wonderful, funny guy, Tommy Culkin, and, and then I saw the, the headline, "Man Behind the Curtain" in the Times-Tribune, which refers to his family thing. But when I first started talking to him, I, he was just a guy, a funny guy. And then I found out he was a police officer, and I've since found out, yeah, he, he was a Scranton detective. He's just, uh, I, I got so many insights about so many things, talking about Pub Charles, about, you know, his, his favorite police chiefs, his favorite mayors, and, and every time I talked to him, I'd go back to the library and look up, look up the stuff that, that he mentioned. And I'm very sad that, that he, he died last Thursday suddenly, because till about three weeks ago, I'm, I'm just seeing him almost every day, talking to him. There's, there's a service forum in the Hill Section Thursday, for anybody who knows. He put on these, these Christmas and Halloween things called Holiday House, and I had seen, you know, and I'd even, when I recognized, yeah, it's Culkin, the Culkin family, he did, he, he didn't even, he's a funny guy, you know? But after his death, I found out, he, he was the guy that was the main Culkin that was doing it all. And the sense of humor and everything in there, especially in the Halloween things, it's also Tommy, and he's gonna be missed. The parking garage thing, you know, I'm reading about that. Well, staying on the police for a second, you know, Tommy would tell me, until like 2001, the police station was right here in City Hall, and after that, it, that's where the Civil War Museum was, and then they moved the Civil War Museum. John Basilaga gave a space for it in the mall, which is great. But, uh, uh, this is a wonderful community with, um, an awesome history. And I think people should take note about, about the stuff that's come out about, about Comey, Brennan, and Clapper, the, the FBI, CIA. It's clearly treason, and a brave announcement last week by Tulsi Gabbard. And this has to be dealt with. This is not Democrat, not Republican. This is the Republic of our nation that has to be taken care of locally. The parking garage, the Greenview, or whatever the entity that it's called, that, that they, they send things out, there's a consulting thing, and then it goes to another group, and another group. There's all these groups in Scranton. Everything's a group. The police are a group, the firemen are a group, the, the, uh, all, all the five oh one three Cs are groups, and it's one group against the other. And somehow, we've lost constitutional governance here. We still don't have a commissioner, and that's the problem. You don't know where to go to. You don't know, you know, who's the person at the top, you know? Oh, it's a company in Philadelphia that's handling the American Rescue Act, ERAP money here now. Oh, just like with the parking. They didn't really emphasize the most important thing with the parking. Oh, there's no parking on Saturdays, but we're saddled with nine more years with this entity for the parking. And I hope the ballots, this thing, election is important, and I do not understand why they're still printing ballots in multiple languages, and the taxpayers are paying for it. This, this is not right. And there should be a record of all the people evicted in magistrate's court. There has to be a record.
Good evening, Scranton City Council. Mike Mancini, Scranton. I show up here weekly because I care about the good people of Scranton. I witness firsthand the kindness in people locally, more than once. First was the passing of my mother, then the passing of my only child, a Marine, active Marine stationed in San Diego, passed away the day after his twenty-sixth birthday. I'll always be lost without him. Third was when I was diagnosed with stage-two Hodgins lymphoma. There are so many people locally who truly care. I don't show up for myself, I show up for them. Some questions get answered, depending on the speaker, certainly not a good look. And some can go past their allotted five minutes, based upon what the council president, if he likes the topic, shows favoritism. Mr. Smurl apologized for letting this quorum get out of control on June third. Sounded genuine. And I quote, "I understand there's a lot of hateful statements that were made, and some were directed towards speakers and council members. It is my job as council president not to allow hateful, derogatory remarks to be directed towards any one individual. As council president, I take full responsibility for not doing my job to maintain order. At last week's meeting, I apologize for not performing my job properly. Smurl apologized, said in part, 'Going forward, I will fulfill my duties, as I promised to uphold when I was sworn in as council president.'" Apparently, you can't keep your promises. You made a hateful comment towards me last week while walking away from the podium, and I quote, "They never grow up, do they?" Do you think that was appropriate? Does Mr. King, Mr. Schuster, and Mr. McCandrew think that comment was appropriate? I would ask Dr. Rothschild the same question, but he did the same thing as Mr. Smurl. Any one of the three of you could have said, "Point of order. Mr. Smurl, the comment was out of line. It's then out of peep. In the future, I would consider, would hope that you consider using your voice, making known that inappropriate and improper comments, like Mr. Smurl or Dr. Rothschild, will not be tolerated. Each of you has a sworn duty to every citizen in Scranton, regardless of race, color, religion, sexual preference, or difference of views. My mother taught me at a very young age that people are like snowflakes. No two are exactly the same. If everybody was the same, it would be a dull world. I choose to be different. I pay attention to the local doings and show up here weekly because I truly care." It's not a good look to others when our council president makes a hateful comment towards anyone, let alone me. The extra set of doors downstairs does not help either. These things push people away, as if what is said in this very room is not important. Weekly, bring up important issues, like our roads, unwanted opioid-related deaths, extreme police calls, just to name a few. However, last week, the topic was about our council president that he didn't like, hence the hateful comment. In fifth order, I would appreciate a comment from each of you about the hateful comments directed towards me. If none of you comment, then you condone the hateful comments- If none of you comment, then you condone the hateful comments that were directed towards me last week. Choose to be different. Choose to be above mediocre. The remainder of this time will be given to Mr. Smurl to apologize without recourse on my end. You two can chime in. This is what we get. Crickets. Good evening, council.
Thank you.
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments? Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes. I just want to send out my due notice to the county of Scranton, and to Marilyn, and to Karen, Brady, Egan, brother Pat. Considered to be a very friend for over 40 years, dedicated police officer for the city of Scranton, the Holiday House that he put on for all the children, citizens of the city of Scranton. Tremendous, just gave so much to our city. It's a great loss, tremendous loss for our city. I'm totally agree with this. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
So, just as Mr. King said, I wanted to express my condolences to the Culkin family, his wife Marilyn, and his four daughters. I got to know Mr. Culkin over the years, as well as some of his daughters. But a tradition that was started in my family was my mother and father took us to visit the Holiday House during the Christmas time, and we passed that on to our child as well. It's something we do every year. And just as everyone has sat here tonight, thank him for his service to the Scranton Police Department, the service to the St. Patrick's Parade Committee, and he will be greatly missed here in Scranton. Tonight, we were supposed to have Director Martindale from the Scranton Redevelopment Authority. I was waiting several weeks to hear from her and to hear her in caucus. So, I do believe we've reached out to see if we could secure her for next week's meeting.
That's correct, sir. It's tentative. Next week's meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Frank. So, I hope to see her here next week with some questions from council to see what the Redevelopment Authority has been doing over the last year and a half or so. Other than that, one thing for the administration, Frank, if we can get an update, in June, I had asked for an update on the delinquent BPM tax, where we are in regards of collections and any information that we were receiving on that delinquent BPM.
I'll follow up with them tomorrow.
And then, as I've said in the last couple of weeks, I have some things out on stormwater, on short-term rentals, and on some other roads, so I'll follow up via email on those. And also, congratulations to Mr. Gilbright, state president of the AOH. That's all, Mr. Smurl.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes. I'd also like to echo the sentiments from my colleagues and give my condolences to the Culkin family and to thank them for everything that they do each year and the joy that they've spread to those in Scranton and from beyond who have gotten to visit their home and see the lights. And it's certainly a great tradition in a lot of our families around Christmas time. So, you know, I'm saddened to hear of his passing. Yeah. And a few of the things that we had discussed in caucus that I brought up during that time, I was just going to briefly mention and recap. First off, we've continued to receive complaints from a number of people from different parts of the city about the stray cat problem. And I'd like some further details and information from the police department. I'd like to know if traps are being set out, and if so, how many are being set up. So, I'd like to get some numbers and further information on that because it seems to be in some of these neighborhoods where it's an especially large problem or where there might be sick cats and kittens that they're still not seeing the traps being set up there. So, I want to find out, you know, what barriers there are and what we can do to help that. I know in the past, resources have been a problem with not many of the organizations taking those cats and performing the neutering or spaying. But I know that we had also opened up the fire station for them to be temporarily housed or contained. So, just want further updates on where we are with that. I know it's an issue every year, but sometimes in some areas, it seems even worse than before.
I'll get those answers tomorrow.
Thank you. And something that, I mean, that I have a personal interest in, would like to see grow more in our city are opportunities for composting. And there was a business that I had visited that recently began composting, and I wanted to find out from our environmental advisory board if there had been any, anything issued from them recently on composting, or if there are any ideas stemming from that advisory board that could be useful for our city. I know it would be something that a future DPW director could also address through their department, but since we're lacking there now, just want to see if there's anything else that we're providing in the way of composting from the city.
We can ask the administration and the board.
Great. Thank you. And lastly, the streets that I've been mentioning of being washed out over the past month from several storms is still untouched on both Pine Street and East Gibson Street in the neighborhoods of Regional Hospital and Moses Taylor. So, for several blocks on both of those streets, it's in pretty bad shape. And I had asked last week for a timeline of when DPW would be addressing that, but I don't believe we've received anything, and I want to make sure that the mayor's administration is also aware of the severity of those streets to get them addressed as quickly as we can.
That's correct. The barricades were set, but we need to escalate that tomorrow.
Yes, thank you. I'd appreciate that. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I'd also like to offer my condolences, thoughts, and prayers to the family of Tom Culkin. I know him personally. My kids are in their 30s, I have three daughters in their 30s, that were excited. Every year, we had to go to the Holiday House. And you know what? And they were just as excited every year, and then even now, my grandchildren, we were able to bring them, and they were just as excited. I'm also proud of the dedicated police officer he was for the city of Scranton. I mean, he gave it all. He gave it all to the citizens, the little kids every year. He'll be sorely missed. Next up, I have a quality-of-life public safety issue at the corner of Acker and Smith Streets. This corner is extremely overgrown with six to eight feet of weeds and such that are affecting the line of sight at the intersection. Mr. Waldenberg, I also have pictures that were sent to me that I'll forward to you, but it just needs to be taken care of.
Thank you.
And, you know, I'm going to speak over the past two weeks, and I thought about this before I came, and I actually wrote it down, that over the past few weeks, there's been intense dialogue during fourth-order public comment. Myself, always being mindful of freedom of speech, and I'll be honest with you, I've held my tongue at times, waiting until fifth order to exercise my same right to freedom of speech to defend myself and at times colleagues. But I've done it in an appropriate and professional manner. I can only speak for myself, but I believe that we need to model the behavior we seek from the dais for those in front of the podium during fourth order, like I said, public comment. I use this strategy every day, standing in front of my students. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. Just a few things that I turned in and we've been on, working on this week. The six of Prospect to fill in the sides of those sidewalks, that was sent in. That will be taken care of. This 900 of Hickory Street code enforcement was sent up there. 425 Crown code enforcement will follow up on that one again. And the 515 Willow Street, the building that was damaged by fire, I've asked them to go and close that building up. There's some open doors and some open windows. I don't know if the city will fix, close them up, or if we can get the, I think there's a contractor hired for that job. Okay, all right. And then 14 of Shanahan Street, some cars in a backyard, junk vehicles. And the one of South Irving, 129, it's way overgrown. That I did send in too. And Cedar Avenue, there was a car there for a few years. That went in today. And also Alder Street and Donnelly Court, we did a cleanup behind the 606 Club in the court, and then there's trash and weeds and stuff back there. If the DPW could pick those up, that was by the South Side Neighborhood Residence Group, if we can get that stuff picked up. And also, we did Inowant Orchard Street and the study on Whittier School. I should have that shortly. That's it, Mr. Waldenberg.
5B, for introduction, a resolution. Appointment of Edward T. Davis as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority to replace Sonia Lobo for a term to expire on June 17th, 2030.
At this time, entertain a motion that on 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
5C, for introduction, a resolution. Reappointment of Alex Plack as a member of the Scranton Ethics Board for a three-year term to expire on August 31st, 2028.
At this time, entertain a motion that on 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
5D, for introduction, a resolution. Reappointment of Betsy Moylan as a member of the Scranton Public Library Authority for a term to expire on January 2nd, 2028.
At this time, entertain a motion that on 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
5E, for introduction, a resolution. Ratifying and approving the city of Scranton's acceptance and administration of grant funds from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for up to $3,112,254 to be used towards the city hall roof repair.
At this time, entertain a motion that on 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed accounts on number 88, 2025, in ordinance. Repealing an antiquated 1928 provision that prohibits overnight parking on any street in the city.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
On the question?
On the question, I want to thank the person, I can't recall who it was, who had brought this to our attention, that this was still on the books in the midst of us with the parking authority legislation recently. And, you know, definitely have to get rid of antiquated pieces of ordinances like this.
Please take that out.
Yeah, so of course, I'm supportive of getting this off the books.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
6B, reading by title, filed accounts on number 89, 2025, in ordinance. Authorizing execution of a temporary easement to Pennsylvania American Water Company for a community environmental project at Roaring Brook.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
6C, reading by title, filed accounts on number 90, 2025, in ordinance. Authorizing execution of a grant of right-of-way to PPL Electric Utilities Corporation for stabilization of an existing pole.
You've heard reading by title of item 6C. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6C pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, filed accounts on number 86, 2025. Amending Chapter 18, Article 6 of City Code to amend provisions governing the vacant blighted property review committee.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. Hereby declare item 7A legally, lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, filed accounts on number 87, 2025. Authorizing the naming of the North Scranton Mini Park on the 1800 block of Wayne Avenue in North Scranton in honor of Anthony Tony Walsh.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
You both seconded it, and so moved. Mr. King? Mr. Schuster?
I'm sorry. I can't.
Hang on. You want to start again? So, we got a so moved. Did we hear a second? Is that what we needed?
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. Hereby declare item 7B legally, lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, resolution number 242, 2025. Resolution for plan revision for new land development located at 1225 North Kaiser Avenue.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. Hereby declare item 7C legally, lawfully adopted.
7D, previously tabled, filed accounts on number 81, 2025. Establishing a school zone at Francis Willard Elementary School at the intersection of Hampton Street and South Main Avenue, the intersection of Hampton Street and 12th Avenue, the intersection of Einan Street and South Main Avenue, and the intersection of Einan Street and 12th Avenue.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. Hereby declare item 7D legally, lawfully adopted.
7E, previously tabled, filed accounts on number 82, 2025. Establishing a no-parking zone on Einan Street at the mid-block crosswalk near Francis Willard Elementary School.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. Hereby declare item 7E legally, lawfully adopted.
7F, previously tabled, filed accounts on number 83, 2025. Establishing Hampton Street as a one-way eastbound roadway from 12th Avenue to South Main Avenue.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. Hereby declare item 7F legally, lawfully adopted.